Great, so as I said, welcome and we are here to talk to you about the affordable housing plan for the town of Killingworth. I guess, next slide. I'm joined tonight by my stellar project team, Liz Esposito and Robert Collins from SLR, who are going to be leading the presentation tonight. And also Goman and York, who's been working mostly on the data collection portion of our regional plan. Tyke Planning is working with SLR on creating the 830J plans for our towns. And of course, you, the town of Killingworth, and our liaison, Tom Hogarty, have been instrumental in working on this presentation and will be instrumental going forward, working on your plan. Next slide. So we have a lot of ground to cover tonight, particularly because Killingworth was so enthusiastic about completing our survey that we started this project with. So we have a lot of ground to cover. We're going to start talking about the regional housing plan, as I mentioned, and the 830J plans that we're creating for 12 of our towns, including Killingworth, which we're calling the municipal annexes. We're going to talk a little bit about what affordable housing is and what these affordable housing plans that I keep talking about actually are. And we're going to look at what this means for the town of Killingworth. We're then going to go into some existing conditions for your town related to housing. We'll look at zoning and planning and infrastructure in your town. We'll compare available land, buildable land, and suitable land for housing. And we'll look at your demographic and housing trends. We'll take that information and we'll look at your housing needs assessment and establish where the housing gaps are for Killingworth. And then we'll go over some interactive exercises with you on potential strategies, and we'll get your feedback. And actually, we're going to do that through a separate software called Poll EV. And if you have a smartphone, or if you're accessing this via computer, go ahead and get your phone next to you, or open a separate browser now, and we'll walk you through the steps of how to do that when we get there. But to save time down the line and have it accessible and available. Next slide. So what is your primary role tonight? Hopefully, to learn more about affordable housing and why it's important to your community, to provide us with some input on potential affordable housing strategies for your community, and to ask questions you may have on the subject. You can type them into the chat, and we'll answer them that way at the end of the workshop. Or when we get to the end, we'll have a Q and A session, and we can use the raised hand function and just have a conversation that way. So getting started, as I mentioned at the beginning, this 830J plan for the town of Killingworth is part of the regional housing plan. So the regional housing plan is a follow-up to Rivercog's Regional Plan of Conservation and Development, which was adopted by the board in September of 2021. And that plan had a lot of goals related to creating additional housing and providing more information to the towns about housing needs and creating more diverse housing options. So this is a follow-up to that process. And the regional housing plan is being created in two parts. The first part is a regional housing analysis that looks at region-wide trends and challenges and addresses how we can look at housing issues comprehensively and across all towns and across all income groups and household types. And also looks at ways that the region can work together to coordinate the creation of housing. The second part is the 830J plans. And these are being created for 12 of our towns in the region, including Killingworth, as part of this process. And these plans, which we're going to talk a lot more about tonight, focus specifically on affordability in your towns. So these two parts of the plan will feed into each other. The regional analysis, which we've been working on, will have recommendations that can feed into the town plans. And then after we've talked with all of the towns who are participating in this process, we'll use what we hear and feed that back into the regional analysis. So each part of this process is going to inform the other. And with that, I'm going to give it over to Liz, and she's going to be the star of the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Megan. So what are affordable housing plans? Megan's given us a really good base. So 830J is an attempt from the state to have every town create an affordable housing plan that they'll update every five years. So under this statute, the town has to make a good faith effort to demonstrate how they're going to increase the supply of affordable housing. And show some progress. And but because it's a plan, each community can decide what's best for them and how they want to do this in a custom way, instead of the state dictating to you what they think you should do. So it's great that we have so many participants tonight to really contribute to this effort. So yeah, this is your opportunity to create a plan that reflects your town's values and priorities, not anyone else's, not necessarily Rivercog's, not necessarily the state's, although they may align in a lot of different ways. So this, it's all positive. So the state released some guidance about what these plans should include. This involves a community value statement, which we're going to pull heavily from your Plan of Conservation and Development, or POCD, if you hear me say that acronym a lot. Conduct a housing needs assessment, and we'll show you those results tonight. Identify barriers created by zoning or other land uses, and how those prevent the development of affordable housing. And are there goals or strategies that we can talk about tonight that may alleviate some of those barriers? And then take a look at some case studies so we can apply best practices. So how is affordable housing defined? The rule of thumb is that housing is affordable when it costs no more than 30% of a household's income. So that's any income level, if you're spending less than 30% of your income on housing, it is affordable to you. Under state statute, 830G, which is separate from 830J, they add an additional qualification that it is housing that is reserved for low-income individuals through a deed restriction or some sort of relief that the occupant receives. And this makes it possible for a low-income household to spend no more than 30% of their income. Under the state definition, low income is defined as a household that makes less than 80% of the area median income. So that's AMI, you'll hear me say that a lot tonight as well. So for a family of four, to be considered low income, their household income has to be less than $80,000. For an individual, that's less than $60,000. So they would qualify, so families or individuals at those levels would qualify as low income and may be eligible for benefits under this definition. So housing costs, so that 30% is not just your rent and your mortgage payment. It also includes property taxes, utilities, HOA fees, maintenance costs, all those things that are wrapped up in occupying a space, basically. So for an individual, the maximum monthly housing budget, so how much you could spend per month in Killingworth would be about $1,400. For a family of four, that's just over $1,800. So Killingworth did a phenomenal job responding to the regional housing survey that was available last fall. We got 619 responses, which is basically 10% of the town. You blew away every other Rivercog town, it was pretty incredible. And all the IP addresses were unique, so we know that they were folks, individual folks, instead of someone just hitting buttons over and over and over again. There are a lot of stats on here about who responded, I'm not going to go through all of them. But the main points are that older adults were typically oversampled, so 60% of our respondents were over 55, where there are only 37% of the town that's actually over 55. And 64% reported that their annual household income is over $100,000, which is pretty high, all things considered. We also asked some questions about where people's perceptions about housing and where they see themselves. The majority of people see themselves staying in the same size household in five years and remaining in their current housing situation five years from now. 25% are looking to downsize, so that's into a smaller family, single home, condo or townhome, multifamily, senior living, or an accessory dwelling unit. Forty or 42% of respondents are aware of households that would benefit if there were more affordable housing options in the community. And 38% know someone in town who struggles with housing costs. But only 16% personally struggle with housing costs. And about a third of respondents are aware of affordable housing in the community. And that could be if you aren't personally affected by housing prices, you may not know about it, so it's kind of a feedback loop there. The majority, almost three-quarters of the respondents say Connecticut is too expensive. 64% said the region is too expensive, and just over half said Killingworth is too expensive. Just over half think housing is an important component of community longevity. Just under half do not think that the current housing options available meet residents' needs. And 40% do not think the existing housing stock is adequate to satisfy future demand. These respondents most frequently cited that there aren't enough housing choices for young adults, for people living alone, low-income households, or renters. They generally agreed that Killingworth has the right amount of housing for families with children and for homeowners. So finally, we asked folks, would there be any benefit to having more affordable housing in the community? So 37% of respondents identified a positive impact. 40% said it would be negative, and the rest skipped this question. So 164 respondents identified at least one benefit. Increased diversity, whether that's socioeconomic, cultural, racial, age diversity, that was the number-one response. Enabling seniors to age in place is number two. Enabling young people who grew up in town to remain in town is three. Enabling employees that work in Killingworth to live in town is four. Create opportunities for lower-income residents is five. And improve the community and its longevity is six. So that refers to having volunteer firefighters and EMTs that are younger as people retire out of the service, and all other volunteer groups as well. So let's take a look at some existing conditions in your planning and zoning. So you have one type residential district, pretty much. So that's your rural residence district, was adopted in the late 60s, early 70s. And there's a vastly different market and environmental conditions. You also have soil-based zoning, which is more restrictive than typical health department regulations. These, this zone, you can only have a single-family home or a two-family home, and it has to be on a minimum lot area of two acres, although there are some homes in town that do predate this zoning and are on smaller plots. And no building over 35 feet, so two-and-a-half stories. And because you have homogeneous zoning, you typically have a homogeneous housing type. So you're dominated by single-family homes, as we'll see in a little bit. So infrastructure and buildable land. So most of your residents rely on individual wells and septic. The Beechwood community has shared septic and shares a series of wells. So under these conditions, requires well-draining soil, and the soil type determines how much the land can take. And not all land can be used for development. It's environmentally sensitive, it has steep slopes, it floods, it's in an aquifer protection area, so there are a lot of restrictions baked in to conditions in Killingworth. As far as available land, 21% of town is committed to open space, and that includes state forests and water company land. So all of the colored parcels on this map on the right cannot be built. And this also includes public Act 490 lands, so farms, forests, and open spaces that are reserved from development. And under these conditions, you're largely built out, so all of the land that was easy to build on, there's probably a house there. There's not a lot of low-hanging fruit left. I included the regional Plan of Conservation and Development, future land use map, just to zoom out a little bit and give you an idea of what is going on around the region and what their ideas about the future of the region look like. So in Killingworth, there's really a lot of that green, so these sustainability, preservation, conservation strategies. You have the town center around the circle where there can be some more intense development, and some of those lighter areas where there can be some lower-intensity community development. So looking at your POCD, it was adopted in 2018. This is great advantage because it's pretty recent, and we can pull from it. It discusses a lot of different ideas about increasing housing diversity in Killingworth while respecting the existing community character and the natural environment, so keeping that rural feel. So I pulled a couple of quotes. "Local land use regulations must encourage the appropriate development of multifamily, mixed-use, mixed-income, and low-to-moderate income housing. Under conservation subdivision and retirement subdivision regulations, smaller lot sizes are permitted in exchange for increased dedication of open space. Flexible zoning techniques can be used to promote a wider range of housing development available to a varied economic population. This includes floating zones, planned development districts, and overlay zones." So even with all this discussion, the plan doesn't necessarily commit the town to doing any of these strategies. And there are a lot of strategies in your code. Affordable housing subdivisions, accessory apartments, two-family dwellings, retirement housing subdivisions, and apartments in mixed-use areas around the circle. So there are some opportunities, but there are a lot of restrictive regulations on top of these as well, that I'll get into a little bit later. So let's look at your demographic trends. The population peaked in 2010 at around 6,500 residents and decreased a little bit in 2020, about 5%. And even though your population is decreasing, the portion of seniors has increased, so about 20% of town is over age 65. This means that any future population growth will be from housing turnover. So these folks leaving town and selling their homes to larger families. Looking at household distribution, Killingworth has a larger share of married couple, family households compared to the state and county, and lower numbers of people living alone compared to the county and the state. What I want you to focus on here is that just over half of Killingworth households are one or two people, so that it's still pretty small. While you have a pretty decent portion of larger households, it's something to consider that these household sizes are shrinking. So we also took a look at housing wage. So this is an estimate from the National Low-Income Housing Coalition about how much a person should make to be able to afford to live in each community. So for Killingworth, they estimated at just under $28 an hour. So we took a look at Indeed.com data to get average salaries for folks in Killingworth. So for an elementary school teacher, it's around $20 an hour. For a grocery worker at all levels, under $19 an hour. Retail sales is about 16, and waitstaff is about 13. So then we took a look at people who work in Killingworth. So in gray, that's our pre-COVID top employers, there's been a pretty big shift. Also, I think the state is collecting data differently than it used to. But in 2018, the largest employers were the schools, Interstate Battery, La Ferresta, the Killingworth Kids Center, and True Value. And in 2021, it was the Frame Accounting, Jonathan Island Oyster Company, which I don't know, I don't think that's right, but that's what the state is reporting. Interstate Battery, Harkin Engineering, and Boy Scouts, which we know are possibly leaving when they sell the Deer Lake property. So we took a look at, so where workers were commuting into Killingworth, where do they live? So this is also in gray because it most closely matches that data from 2018, that pre-COVID data. So they're coming from areas that typically have either more affordable housing and/or more diverse housing, so Middletown, East Haven, Hartford. And there is a decent portion of folks who live and work in Killingworth, but they're in the minority compared to those who are commuting from farther away. So let's take a look at the housing market. So this is your supply, what you have to offer. You're dominated by owner-occupied housing, none of this should be a surprise, and dominated by single-family homes. What's unique to Killingworth in Rivercog, and I think in most of the state, is the large portion of homes that are manufactured or mobile homes, so that's Beechwood. And that does provide some affordable housing on the whole. So looking at the number of bedrooms in these predominantly single-family homes, 70% of your housing units are three or more bedrooms. So comparing that to your household size, there's a bit of a mismatch. So these larger units are typically for families with children, and the typical household in Killingworth is not that. So looking at home values, you have about a third of your housing that is under $300,000, a third that's between $300,000 and $40,000, and the rest is more expensive. Since 2000, we've taken a look at housing prices. Prior to the pandemic, prices peaked around $419,000 in 2007. Then we see that dip from the Great Recession down to 310. And with COVID, prices have reached an all-time high at $485,000. It was a huge spike, a 24% increase from 2020 to 2021. And these increasing sale prices, A, might encourage more people to sell, but it also exacerbates any housing affordability issues. So looking at your home sale trends, again, nearly exclusively single-family on the sale side. And you have pretty stable home trends at, excuse me, recent home sales at about 95 per year. 2021 is just slightly higher than previous years, but is generally on track. So looking at housing permit activity, we see in the 90s where the town's really getting built out, land starts running out, market conditions are changing, and the permits drop off. So since 2015, Killingworth averaged about seven permits a year. And these are for new builds. They could either be a tear-down or on new open land. Looking at rental costs, there were only 143 units that are included in this figure, it's very small. So your median gross rent is very close to the county and the state. And most of the units are priced at less than $1,500 per month. So generally, pretty affordable, but this is an incredibly small sample size, so we have to take that with a grain of salt. So we've looked at your supply, all the housing that you currently have, your demand, your demographics. Now we're going to put them together into this needs assessment. So how many families in Killingworth who live here right now need affordable housing? Using that 80% AMI criteria, 23% of households in Killingworth qualify as low income. So we've broken this down into low income, very low income, and extremely low income. And taking a look at whether they're homeowners or renters, because issues with affordability vary wildly if you're low income versus if you're extremely low income. Taking a look at cost burden, so that 30%, we mentioned earlier, for low-income renters, about 35% of them are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. So not super surprising, since most of your rental stock is generally affordable. There are still some people feeling that squeeze. And then looking at homeowners, it's a different story. About 61% are cost-burdened currently. And this compares to 15% in the general population, so among people who are not low-income. So then we wanted to see cost burden across the entire population of town. So if a household is headed by a senior, they are much more likely to be cost-burdened than if they are younger. This is likely because they're on a fixed income, and there's not as much cash coming in. We also, not surprising, again, homeowners are more likely to be cost-burdened than renters. Then we wanted to calculate how much house low-income buyers could afford. And for low-income folks, it's not too bad considering the town's housing stock. For an individual, that's $214,000; for a family of four, it's $285,000; for very low income, we're at $143,000; and for a family of four, it's $205,000. Extremely low income, that's $86,000; and for a family of four, it's $121,000. We also did the same calculation for renters. Again, these numbers are generally pretty healthy if you're low income. However, if you fall into the very low income or extremely low income categories, you're having a much harder time finding a place to live in Killingworth. And we wanted to see your protected affordable housing. So again, this is what the state defines as something that's reserved for folks who are low income, or the occupant is receiving some kind of relief. So there are only 23 units that qualify under this definition, so that's less than 1% of housing in town. The majority of these are Connecticut Housing Finance Authority or USDA mortgages. And there are five units that are deed restricted. So with all that said, the gaps that we found for a family of four, there are about 40 units needed for all three income groups to be able to live in town. But for single people, the need is much higher. So you need about 200 units to meet the demand that exists today within the community. We can give more detail on this in our data deck, and I'm happy to answer questions on these numbers. But basically, we took the number of houses that are in these values, value ranges, the number of people who live in your community today, and subtracted them. So let's get into some case studies and potential strategies. So we're going to pause, and you're going to open up that second window or grab your smartphone and go to Poll. um, and go to poll ev.com slash SLR twenty twenty-one. Uh, and we can start some polling questions. So when you get there, it should be a blank screen um, that says, welcome to SLR polling. If you're having any issues connecting, um, feel free to raise your hand with the raise hand function. Don't just wave at the screen because we might not see you. Um, or type it in the chat. And we can help you out. So I'm going to give everybody a minute to do that. Um, I'll see if there are any.
Yeah, while we wait, do you want to uh, take a second and address some of the questions that we already had in the chat? Great. So we have one um, asking, is AMI based on Killingworth median income?
So technically, no. Um, it's based on HUD's Metropolitan Regions. Um, so Killingworth, I believe, falls into Southern Middlesex Counties um, income region. So that's several towns combined. Uh, but it's, it is the most well-suited uh, for this analysis.
And then another question, um, to be clear, the twenty-one percent open space includes four ninety lands that are not guaranteed to remain open space in perpetuity.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so four ninety is included in that twenty-one percent.
Yes.
And that is all we have so far.
All right. So let's see, let's try our first test question and see if folks can get in there. Um, so you should see a question about your favorite flavor of ice cream. Oh, here we go. People are answering. So we have about forty people on the call. So I'd like to get close to that number um, for each of these questions before we move to the next one. So don't be shy about answering. It's completely anonymous. Vanilla and chocolate duking it out, mint chocolate chip. It's almost there. All right. So we're at about twenty. I'm gonna just type the web address into the chat if I can find it. To make sure everybody can get on. All right, seems like we're plateauing at twenty. So let's, let's move on. So we have four potential strategies that we'd like to talk about tonight. These are not the only strategies that are being considered. Um, these are just certain things that we want to hear from you about. Uh, and we'll have some time at the end. If there are other things that you think we should be considering or things that we missed, um, we'd be happy to uh, hear those. So first up is leveraging municipal property. So we're going to look at a case study uh, just over in Guilford. Um, this is the Woodruff property. It's located pretty close to the green. The town got a grant uh, to do a feasibility study on a site that they already owned um, to determine if it was appropriate for housing and how much housing it could support. Uh, they then worked with an architect in, to create a plan for what this development would look like. And how it would be laid out. They then approached a nonprofit housing developer who agreed to follow this plan and build this housing. So once that was all set, they had a town meeting where the residents voted to convey the land to this nonprofit developer who is now building this housing. So looking at that example, should Killingworth study the suitability of underused town properties for housing development? So following that model.
We have some people having difficulty connecting.
Oh, no. Okay, Stephanie, um, I would try, try it on your phone if possible. Or perhaps a different browser if it's not showing up in your current one.
Richard was putting in his um, in the chat and I'll put his in for him if he wants to continue putting him in by the chat.
Oh, great. Thanks, Robert. Okay, so we've got about twenty-three. Looks like things are slowing down. Looks like majority are, are on agree, strongly agree. Um, and a couple disagree, strongly disagrees. Great. So it's a slightly different question. Should Killingworth acquire additional suitable property for housing development? So for example, if a large property such as uh, Deer Lake comes up for sale, should the town take a look at it? Right, got about twenty. Looks like the majority are in the disagree category right now. A pretty split. So this might be a good time if someone answered one way or another. Do you want to raise your hand or type in the chat why you chose what you chose? Just to give us a better idea of where, where folks are leaning and why. All right. It's okay to be a little shy. Oh, there we go. All right. Hi, Catherine.
Hi, um, maybe the Deer Lake example was a poor uh, example. I think one could support the town looking at properties that might be suitable for development. Deer Lake is probably a pretty emotional issue for a lot of people as a place that should not be looked at for development.
That's fair. That, that is a very good point. Anybody else?
We have Fred raising his hand.
Hey, Fred.
On mute, yes. Yeah. Uh, having moved to Killingworth about twenty years ago or something, and having lived in metropolitan or urban settings, I I agree that there should be more, but I'm not sure how folks in that situation are going to be able to navigate around. I mean, you know, the need for uh, public transportation, there's, there's like what, the one, the one bus service and tha- and that's it? What are, what are we saying that they're, how, how are we saying that they're going to handle their daily needs of getting around? I guess that's my point. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. And that's why we're looking at the current needs in the community today. And since there is a gap of, of over two hundred households that live in Killingworth and are struggling with housing costs. Um, that's, that's our focus right now. Um, as far as developing so much that you need transit, I don't think that's in the cards for Killingworth. I don't think that's something that the town will really support. And given the natural resource constraints, even if it was something that everybody wanted, it's, it would be incredibly difficult to do. Um, so I, I think this is very incremental. Um, and we're looking at satisfying the need that's there today between the folks who live in town and the folks who work here. I hope that answers your question. All right. So it seems like we've got everybody that we're going to get about thirty responses. And yeah, still pretty split. Um, so let's move on to a different topic. I can. There we go. So soil-based zoning. Killingworth has soil-based zoning. Um, and that determines how small or large a lot can be depending on your soil type. So it has to be a minimum of two acres of a certain type of soil for each property. And the state ordinances and Killingworth's ordinances say that the local health department is responsible for determining if soils are appropriate for septic. And the number of dwellings and the number of bedrooms it can sustain. And it does all these functions that I've listed on this slide. So soil-based zoning is a bit like a hat on a hat. You're kind of duplicating something that is already being worked on. And because it's in your code, it may be a little bit inaccurate as conditions change. Or if the, the townwide soil mapping isn't as up to date as say localized perk testing is. So there can be some some issues that are brought up here where the soil can actually support more than the older mapping can show. So the zoning is in conflict with the Board of Health. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kathy. See if I can get, there you go.
I got, um. Uh, it does seem to me it might be possible to actually use soil-based zoning as if, with, I understand the current situation, but to actually use um, a revised code of soil-based zoning to actually encourage more development of affordable housing.
Yeah, great point. Um, so tha- that's jumping ahead. That's what we're going to talk about in our next polling exercise. Um, so for this question, again, hypothetical, Killingworth should eliminate soil-based zoning for the entire town and just do regular parcel size. All right, a lot of disagrees. Good. I'm trying to, I'm being intentionally provocative here. People couldn't tell. All right, just topping off at about twenty-six. All right. Oh, a couple more. But we've got it. Okay, so how about if town only eliminated soil-based zoning for certain areas or for certain uses? So it wouldn't be town-wide, it would just be in certain situations that the town determines are appropriate. Okay, slightly more positive, still pretty negative. All right. This, since this is, one's a little bit more split, would anyone like to jump in the hot seat and talk about why they chose what they chose or ask any questions on this topic? All right. I'll, I'll let this one slide. Okay, so we're going to move to our next one. So this is, this I would say is the most like in the weeds we're going to get tonight. This is conservation subdivisions. Uh, Killingworth already has an ordinance for this, but I'm going to give this a little refresher. So conservation subdivisions, also known as an open space subdivision or cluster development, allows for more dense development on one portion of a parcel. And then the rest of the parcel is untouched and goes into, is protected as open space, basically. It doesn't necessarily make housing more affordable. Um, however, a smaller lot size can reduce the price of land that a buyer needs to worry about. It reduces the amount of utilities, tree cutting and other things that the developer would have to do. But if a town wanted to ensure that these went to low-income folks, it would have to be deed restricted in some way. So looking at what you have on the books. So, and I see that Tom's on the call. So if Tom wants to correct me at any point, feel free. So they're pretty restrictive requirements. You have to have at least twenty acres. And fifteen of those have to be in a high soil class, A, B, or C. The maximum number of lots you can have is based on buildable lot area. So it can't be a wetland, can't be a water course. And so you have to have two acres per dwelling, even if the house itself is not sitting on two acres. And all those unique features that you want to protect with an open space subdivision don't count towards your total lot area. And then there's a provision that the total number of all units in the subdivision shall not exceed the number of acres comprising the subdivision divided by three. So that also reduces the number of units you can have on these parcels. On top of that, you can't have more than twelve lots on a private road. Uh, but you have frontage requirements. It's, yeah, there's a lot going on here um, that we, we don't see in other places. So again, we're going to take a look at Guilford. They have the Great Hill Cottage Community that was just uh, approved. This is ten deed-restricted cottage homes, two to three bedrooms, one and a half stories on a twelve-acre lot. Um, it's also, fun fact, designed for uh, to be net zero ready. But you could see it's got a, a water course on it, some, probably some wetlands, probably some steeper slopes. Uh, and all of these are designed around it to kind of hu- be hidden from the main road, um, but still be very comfortable. Looking a little farther afield in Newtown, um, this is a private, privately developed subdivision, um, the Enclave at Totten Lake. It's twenty-nine acres, twenty-nine houses. Seventy percent of those twenty-nine acres will be undeveloped. And it has, and all of these units are sharing frontage on the lake without obstructing views um, from the road or from the lake. And these, these are pretty expensive, as you can probably tell. So looking at those examples, looking at what you are doing currently, should Killingworth increase or eliminate the cap on units on a private road for a new, for new conservation subdivisions, not existing ones? How pretty split again. All right. Does anyone want to chime in here about this one? All right. How about this question? Um, should Killingworth eliminate soil-based zoning for new conservation subdivisions? So taking out that, it has to be A, B, C, D, have, it has to be twenty acres and fifteen have to be A, B, C, or D. Or, I'm sorry, A, B, or C. All right. Very opinionated here.
Since we're still talking about soil-based zoning, I wanted to go back to uh, Kathy's comment in the chat about it being a false dichotomy. And Kathy, I was wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Okay. Um, yeah, because as I, I'm, to my earlier question, I think there probably are way, I don't, I don't know whether soil-based zoning is only one thing. Could we revise or could we have soil-based zoning that recognized current technologies and, and said, okay, you know, you can do this kind of density of housing. It still has to, you know, not result in deterioration of the soils. I mean, one of the big concerns, uh, fair concerns in the town is we don't have any sewers and we don't have public water at the moment. And it would be humongously expensive to do either of those things. So to the extent that we need to protect that, uh, we need, we might that, uh, we need, we might need some kind of soil based zoning. But mi- you know, not the kind that we have now might not be realistic in terms of current technologies and, and uh, you know, the other ends that we want to achieve.
Soil based zoning two point O.
Yeah.
Right. So uh, so if you say, for example, now should we eliminate soil based zoning for new conservation subdivisions? I mean, it shouldn't be that we want to eliminate the protections that we're trying to get from soil based zoning for new conservation subdivisions. That's why I think it's a false dichotomy.
Yeah, no, that, that's fair. Yeah.
Thank you for that. That, that makes a lot of sense.
All right. Excellent. That was perfect. Thank you for monitoring the chat. Sorry for me to see both. Oh, Tom Lentz, are you raising your hand? If you can unmute.
Okay.
Hi.
Ye- yes, I'd like to say something about the soil based zoning. I mean, these questions seem biased against it. The reason we have soil based zoning in Killingworth is that we're dependent on groundwater supplies for our water. And it's important that we avoid sewers. We want to avoid a townwide sewer system, but also uh, septic systems that, that might fail. And uh, so the soil based zoning is just designed to protect groundwater supplies in Killingworth. And, you know, I realize that there are engineered systems that can put, you know, a large number of houses on a very small lot. But uh, these are subject to failure. And I don't think they can be relied on.
That, the point that it's protecting the groundwater is very well taken. And that's, that was the intent in the seventies when this was adopted. But I, I do think that the health department, that's their charge as well as to protect your groundwater. So when they're doing their analysis of lots, um, they may come to a different conclusion than the zoning code. Um, because they have more updated information. But yes, that absolutely well taken that we want to make sure that the groundwater, which is an incredible resource for the town, for the townspeople, there are water companies that are drawing water from the town that that water is protected. Um, I don't think there's any desire to develop the town to a point where it would need public water or sewer or would threaten the existing wells that you have. All right, any other questions or comments before we move on? All right. So how about this one? Killingworth should require that a certain percentage of new conservation subdivision units be set aside as affordable housing. So this would address, there was a comment in the chat that subdivisions typically aren't affordable. This would guarantee that at least a portion of them that the town would determine would fall into that category. Be deed restricted in some way. Okay. You've got about two thirds on the agree side. Would anyone like to chime in and tell us why you picked that? All right. Let's keep moving. Killingworth should consider allowing non-buildable land to count towards your minimum acreage. So in that, you have to have two acres of buildable land for a home. What if it's two acres, but half an acre of it is a wetland? That kind of thing. Okay. Leaning more on the agree. In, in a lot of our towns, we have a lot more people who are neutral, so I really appreciate that you guys are picking a side, one way or the other. Okay, we're at about twenty six. Most folks are agreeing. Okay, so now we're going to switch to our last topic of an affordable housing committee. So as you know, um, Killingworth has an all volunteer committee um, on alternative housing. That's charged to do this eight thirty J plan, basically. Analyze data, describe the implications for Killingworth. And propose ways to generate affordable and environmentally sustainable accommodations for all different kinds of folks in town. So what would be different if it was a more formal affordable housing committee? It could have town staff that support it um, in a more regular way. And they would be able to facilitate and manage public-private partnerships uh, to help the town uh, steer developers toward the kind of uh, housing development that the town is looking for. And it would be, they'd be able to coordinate the development for more affordable or diverse housing that aligns with the town's priorities. Um, so it's, it's kind of a two point O of your alternative housing committee. Is that something that you'd like to see the town do? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So are, is, is the alternative a, a paid housing committee?
So I think it would, it would still be volunteer, um, but it would be supported by town staff that would kind of run, run the full time operation. But it would, they would be directed and overseen by a board or committee. Kind of like planning and zoning. Does that make sense? Yes, town staff are paid. Okay. Got about little over half that agree. Think, okay, so this is, this one's a little different and a little trickier. So looking at all the different things we talked about tonight. I want you to drag and drop the things you think are the most appropriate for Killingworth to the top and the ones that you don't think are appropriate for Killingworth to the bottom, and then submit your list. So you're ranking them. The top is the best and the bottom is the worst. We're going to see see what priorities this group has tonight.
And just to reiterate, this is the very beginning of the conversation, not the end of the conversation. So, you know, the answers tonight are really just kind of a pulse check to get your input and see if we're going in the right direction, if we're going in the wrong direction, where we should start looking from here.
Thank you. Oh, Nancy, oh no, um, you shouldn't be working on your phone.
You can also direct message to your responses to me or to Liz, and we will make sure that-
You have to double tap it. If you double tap it, then an arrow up or down comes up, and then you can move it up or down based on that.
Oh, awesome. Thank you, Robert.
Got it.
Failing that, if you would like to direct message your responses to Liz or I, you can do that as well.
Oh no, sorry, Mike. Well, if you can remember what we've talked about tonight, um, you you can direct message me or Megan, let's say your top three. And we'll take them into account. Oh, we got our first one in. See everyone close to their screens busily clicking away, very encouraged. Okay, we've got a couple more. Got just about a third of everybody. The suitability of underused town properties is leading us off. We have affordability requirements for new conservation subdivisions. Tight, tied in first. It's like the slowest horse race. It looks like, um, consider allowing non-buildable land is coming in third. The formal for affordable housing committees in fourth. Acquiring additional property and eliminating the cap on private roads, five and six. And our soil based zoning questions are all rounding out the bottom. Right about eighteen. I'm going to leave this up for a while. Okay, got about nineteen, so I'm going to leave this up, but does anyone have any other? Oh, we have a question. Increase or eliminate? Oh, I'm so sorry, that should be change or eliminate. I apologize, that is a typo. I think increase was intended to be increase the types of soils that were allowed. Okay, we're at about twenty three, so I think that, that's pretty good. That's the majority of folks. So let's move on to an open Q and A. Are there any questions or comments? Has the presentation tonight sparked anything um, in your thinking about housing in Killingworth and what the future could look like? Use the raise hand function, type in the chat, we'd be happy to hear from you.
And the bubble questions on the screen are a jumping off point in case you uh, need some inspiration for questions or comments.
I'll, I'll give you guys a moment to think. Oh, here we go. Hi, Lorraine. So yes, the examples I gave in Guilford were all affordable housing units. Um, so they were deed restricted um, so that they would be occupied solely by folks who make less than eighty percent of the area median income. Oh. Catherine, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't, I'm not trying to.
No, I appreciate it.
Blah, so much. Uh, one question is, uh, going back very early in your presentation, you said that when the state counts affordable housing units, it's either deed restricted or people who are currently receiving.
Uh, some sort of assistance, so that's um, uh, relief on their mortgage, tenant based rental assistance, um, or other government assistance.
And the number you gave was twenty something, I, I think for Killingworth.
Yes.
I wondered whether that included people in uh, the Beechwood community who are receiving either rental assistance or tax abatements.
Um, if it's a local tax abatement, I am not sure if that's included. So this is the slide you were referring to. Um, but if they're receiving other, you, other relief through the state or the federal government, it is counted.
So I'm, I'm surprised that it's that, I would think it'd be a little bit higher than that.
Yeah.
Also, um, the, uh, the employers, I've seen that in the, in the census, the, the, the local large employer, but like, that's totally useless information that those are, uh, there may be people who have their business registered in Killingworth, but they have nothing to do with employment in Killingworth is the, the last five of those. I mean, it's just nuts.
Yeah, we, we've, we've run into some issues with the advanced CT data in other communities as well. That's why I wanted to put the older stuff up.
Yeah.
So just for
Just ignore it.
Yeah.
But more to, um, ha- has any of the research that you guys have been doing so far identified like how me- how much land might be available um, in Killingworth to do conservation sub, you know, remaining land to do conservation subdivisions or to do different kinds of um, subdivisions?
Yeah, so we haven't done a full build out yet, um, because most of your land right now is privately held. Um, so it would involve subdividing land that's already occupied. So whether there's appetite for that, it's, it's a very hard to tell and, and coming to a conclusion based on that might be a little bit misleading. So we, we didn't dive into that. Yeah.
I, I think there are just not even that many sizable parcels left that are, but, you know,
Yeah.
it would be useful to know that, I think.
Definitely, that's a great point.
Thank you.
Um, I also wanted to read out one of the comments in the chat. We need to attract younger folks in town, also allow older people to remain in town and be able to afford it. That's, that's the idea. So thanks for echoing that, Michelle. Nancy had a question about the, the houses managed in Guilford. Um, they weren't managed, they're not managed by the town. Um, so when, for the first example, the Woodruff property, when the town transferred the land to the nonprofit housing developer, um, it then became the developer's responsibility to manage the units and maintain them. For the cottages, believe those are sold, um, so it's the occupants. It's their responsibility to take care of those. So Donna saying she's feeling hurted to agree with and choose some options in the presentation without considering who is paying for this. So Donna saying she's feeling hurted to agree with and choose some options in the presentation without considering who is paying for this to happen is the economic impact on members of the community. We weren't trying to lead you. We were just asking you to agree or to disagree. The options we're presenting tonight do not put a burden on the town to provide subsidies directly to developers or occupants. They're just strategies to open up the possibility for different types of housing to be built in town. And the market will determine whether there's an appetite for that, whether developers see it as a good investment to develop these kinds of things in town once they're allowed to do so. Looking at the, Laurel has a comment about the watershed. The local civil engineer stated only Chester possibly has such a profile. The need to protect soil-based zoning goes beyond groundwater to protect our private, beyond groundwater protection of our private wells. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an incredible natural resource. Your aquifer is used. Yeah, we, we have no intention of trying to, again, we have no intention of hurting the town into developing things that would hurt the groundwater or any other aspect of the water and soils in town.
I wanted to just reiterate again what Liz was saying. We're really not trying to lead anyone into, you know, agreeing or disagreeing with anything in particular. These comments are really useful and valuable. And you know, now that we've heard your thoughts on soil-based zoning, we'll go back and we'll relook at that strategy, maybe take a look at Kathy's suggestion about sort of a 2.0 and we'll bring that back to the town. And this will be a dialogue back and forth based on what we hear from you. So we're listening, we're adapting and adjusting. This is a conversation.
Absolutely. Let's go to our next comment. Richard says, look at the private-owned properties and approach them. That is, that is a thought. The town in looking for possible other suitable properties may want to enter a right of first refusal agreement with private owners. Or it's, it's something about homeowner education where we can possibly see if people wanted to subdivide land or something like that. Christie asks how slash who would pay for something like this? I'm not, Chrissy, I don't know if you want to chime in and unmute. Why is something like this? I know I, I'm a little bit behind on the comments with the discussion live. But-
If we're talking about just affordable housing in general, there are a lot of different ways that affordable housing gets built. A lot of it is to do with, you know, just developers pulling together financing and towns providing certainty and quicker timelines for developers to build what they need to, at the end of the day, if we're going with that kind of private market development of affordable housing.
Shell says the town should think of incentives to want to build in town. Yeah, that's definitely a strategy we can look at.
And that's something also that we're looking at on the regional level, where we're looking at just housing needs and housing demand across the region. And I'm sure some of you, I'm not sure how many, attended the regional presentations that we did, talking about the overall housing and job market. And those presentations, if you're interested in viewing them, are available on the RiverCog Regional Plan, Regional Housing Plan website, and I'll put that in the chat for you. So if you have a few hours and you'd like to listen, it's, it's actually very interesting and, and it goes right down those lines of, of incentives for people wanting to come here.
Great. John says this plan has to be achieved without a future tax burden on taxpayers. Yeah, I agree. And that's why we're looking at more of these private market strategies and being able to maybe provide some zoning relief or some more guidance to developers. So they would be the ones taking on the risk in developing housing. Bill asks, any examples of large family homes being converted into two-family homes? In town, I'm not aware, but that is, is definitely a strategy that's been used throughout the state. Is, and it, it is something that's allowable in your current zoning. Is for two-family housing on one parcel. So are there ways to make that easier through the zoning code? To make that conversion is definitely something we can look at.
And in fact, that's something that was brought up at Old Times Meeting last night as a strategy that they were interested in as well.
Great. Yeah, seeing some, some regional commonalities.
And that's one great thing about doing this plan as a region. We're looking at the big picture. And then we're also, as we're going to each of these 12 towns, we're, we're learning from everybody. You know, no town is an island and they all interact. So it's, it's very interesting for us to kind of piece together the roles that each town plays in the greater region.
Any other questions or comments before we wrap it up? All right. But let's talk about the next steps. So we're going to take all this input that you've given us. We're going to continue to refine and develop the strategies we've talked about tonight and some of the strategies you've suggested. And we're going to prepare your 830 J plan in March and April, create a draft that'll be available for the public to review and give comment on in the mid-spring. And then we'll finalize that plan based on your comments. The adoption of the plan and the submission to the state, we're aiming to be done by June 1st. And that will get us over the finish line. Oh, we've got a couple more comments that have come in. Over recordings of the presentations. Thank you, Megan, for answering those. And how is affordable housing involved in the approval? How is affordable housing involved in the approval prior to public comment? Not sure what you mean by that, Mike. Do you want to unmute and talk it out so I can better answer your question? Oh, the Affordable Housing Committee. Thank you. I appreciate that. So the Affordable Housing Committee through Tom Hogarty, your liaison, is going to be guiding this process. We'll be presenting you with drafts with ideas on strategies. And you'll give us some more guidance directly. And we can present the full draft to the public in, in mid-spring. Roslyn asks, where can someone who didn't attend this workshop comment on the strategies? Great question. They can email me directly. I'll put my email in the chat. As Megan also mentioned in the chat already, these recordings will be available so people can, people can view it, get that context and send, send their comments over. And yes, Mike, we will provide a schedule to the committee that has more concrete dates. Oh, Megan, do you want to take this one?
Yes, so we will, I mean, we will be communicating through your liaison with your housing committee. We will be publicizing the draft before it comes available and also keep an eye on the RiverCog webpage. You did register for this, so we will send emails out to people who registered to attend the presentation and let them know when the draft is available to comment on. Did I catch the answer to that question?
Yes.
And you can also email to info@rivercog.org and just put in the RHP and the town that you're from, if you want to ask a question. And that's also on the website. There's a contact us bar.
Great. All right. Anything else? Going once? Going twice? Well, thank you all so much for your time tonight. We really appreciate you taking time out of your evening to listen to all these statistics and give your opinions. It's incredibly valuable. And as Megan said, this isn't the end of this process. We are just beginning this conversation and we look forward to continuing to hear from you as we move forward.
Thank you, everyone, so much.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Thanks, Sam.
Oh, Megan, do you know the name of the liaison for Clinton? Off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, no, but I could find it really quickly.
Okay.
I always, I always wonder at the end if these are people who are waiting to see if they hear something interesting or if they're people who walked away. You didn't walk away.
Hey, Richard. Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, I, I'd like to talk a little further on. I mean, I've, I've lived up here in Killingworth for a long time, so it'll be interesting to have some conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this meeting was really informative for us.
Yeah, it's, what most people don't realize is it's not a lot of land left up here in Killingworth.
Yeah.
And again, you know, it's off the record, but there's, there's, there's buildable property if you do it right. And we run into a lot of the same issues in Clinton. Obviously, we have beach houses trying to stuff into little corners. And you know, if, if we can make it work with septic and we can make it work with health, we make it work.
Right.
And that can happen up here. It's just, it's been an uphill battle for a couple of years up here. They don't want development.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a regional attitude.
Killingworth is, I don't want it in my backyard. Because